Y'all for being here tonight. This is our May fifteenth Bowling Green, Warren County Planning Commission. Matthew, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ballinger?
Here.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Here.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks? Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker? Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Matthew. Commissioners, we have the minutes in our packet of our May the first 2025 meeting. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We'll call for a motion, please.
Second.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Upstaying.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ballinger?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Upstaying.
Commissioner Sissel?
Upstaying.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved. Commissioners, in your packets, we have the subdivision site development plans. Are there any questions regarding those development plans? All right, they'll be approved as submitted. We enter into our new business tonight. Megan, our financial report, please.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I've got a quick update on our third quarter budget. Everybody should have the budget in their packet. If we look at the first page, our total income, which is on line number twenty-three, I have highlighted in yellow, we're at sixty-nine point five percent of the budget. We would like to be, since we're three-quarters in, we would like to be right at seventy-five percent. This means we're a little bit behind, but that is still to be expected because, as you guys know, NPO and transit lags behind just a little bit, and we make a lot of that up in the fourth quarter. If you flip over to the second page, under total expenditures, we're at sixty-seven point two percent. I've got that highlighted in yellow for you guys, too. Again, we'd like to be right around seventy-five percent or a little bit less, which we are, so we're doing great there. That's pretty much all I've got as far as the third quarter budget update. Do I have any questions on that before I move over to the amendment?
Commissioners, any questions for Megan? All right.
No? Okay. If we flip back over to the first page, you're going to notice on lines five and six, that's our NPO-related funds and transit funds. Those are decreasing, especially line number six. That's decreasing quite a bit. The reason we're not receiving that funding is because we had a project that is coming in well under budget. As you guys know, NPO and transit are mainly a pass-through for us, so the total overall effect for our budget is very minimal, but those two line items are decreasing. If you flip over to the second page and look at lines number forty-eight and forty-nine, that's our transportation studies and transit planning funds. Those line numbers, our line items are significantly, especially line number forty-nine, significantly lower as well. The overall impact to our budget is less than forty-five hundred dollars, and I've balanced that by decreasing our operating reserves, which is line number seventy-four, highlighted in orange.
So you increased that number by four thousand dollars, is that correct?
Forty-five, yes, I'm sorry, increased it by forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Roughly, yeah. Do I have any questions on the amendment?
All right.
No? Okay, we do need to get a motion on both of those items separately.
Yeah. Commissioners, would, two amendments, please. Would you call for a motion for the amendment to the third quarter budget?
I make a motion that we accept the proposed budget amendments as presented.
We, yeah, and then also, Mr. Graham, would you, the budget amendment, both items, is that correct, Hamp?
Yes, both the third quarter report and the third and budget.
Amendment, okay. I'll amend my motion to include the third quarter budget report and the amendments.
Second, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ballinger? My apologies. Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Yes.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, the motions are approved, the third quarter budget and the budget amendment. Commissioners, one other item under new business, in your packets, you have two letters of credit and performance bonds that are listed there. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sissel?
Upstaying.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Motion is approved. Mr. Moore, before we get to you, we have one other new business item tonight. Tell me your name again. Come up, come to the microphone, please. If you would tell us your name and your address or your specific duty, sir.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Mr. Garmy. I'm with the Small Business Administration, federal government, and I'm here to raise awareness. I'm doing some public outreach in Warren County, which was recently declared an emergency state due to recent storms and as well as like winds and tornadoes that occurred starting April second.
Okay.
So Warren County is covered, so that's why I'm here, to raise awareness around people. So I'll be brief, I know how time is valuable here. So we do have, in SBA, I'm not sure how many people are familiar with the Small Business Administration, but what we do is we provide, like, in my office is basically disaster recovery office. What we do is we provide loans, very low-interest loans, to homeowners, renters, nonprofits, as well as business owners. And we do have, like, for businesses, for example, we have physical loans for businesses up to two million dollars for EIDL, economic injury disaster loans, up to two million dollars as well, mostly covering account payables as well as payrolls and all the economic injury. And for homeowners, we have loans up to five hundred thousand dollars. And when I'm speaking about these loans, it's very low interest, like down to two percent. That's for most homeowners, nonprofits, as well as businesses, mostly three percent. And most people haven't heard of SBA, even in states like Florida, where I was recently, where we've been for four years in a row, helping them recover from disaster, and they still haven't heard of our mission. So it's very important for residents to know. And in addition to, for homeowners, we have up to five hundred thousand dollars. And as well as for renters, we do have for property damages, for like car and furniture as well, up to a hundred thousand dollars. So that's mostly our program, that's what we do, and we invite everyone to apply. Now, we do have, we do check the credit and the ability to repay, but we also believe that most people that like, that go through some of these disasters, they need a lot more help than just, for example, grants. Well, it's great to have grants, but usually they're limited funds for grants. For FEMA, for example, last year was up to forty-two thousand dollars. That, while helpful, cannot help people, business owners, for example, as well as homeowners, with severe damages recover fully from that disaster. And one advantage we have is repayment for over thirty years, up to thirty years, and with no payments required for the first year, no interest card as well. That would be it.
Thank you for that information, sir.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you so much.
And if there's anyone in the audience that wants to participate?
Absolutely. I will leave some fact sheets around here, and the website is lending@sba.gov, and our physical damage application is due on June twenty-third, but for economic injury, it's up to January twenty-second of 2026. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here tonight. All right, Mr. Moore, we will now enter our public hearings, and if you would swear our people in tonight, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Warren, if you would please, I request that you order the record to hide and put all of the statutory and regulatory provisions that govern your work, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's topic, and the qualifications for each of the staff witnesses. And finally, I request that you administer the oath to all the witnesses who testified before.
Y'all swear to tell the truth? Thank you very much. Our first item tonight is item number one, which has been postponed, 2025-05-DP, A B C V Holdings. So if you're here for that item tonight, it has been postponed. Our next item tonight is 2025-06-DP Laurel Ridge Apartments LLC, care of Solomon Puttlak, has filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions on nine point seven-six acres located at four ninety Plano Road. The area subject, the area subject to this application is currently zoned RM3, townhouse, multifamily residential, and this will be our four county commissioners and our four city commissioners. Thank you. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in April for the property you just referenced, located at four ninety Plano Road, and the applicants have applied for a development plan amendment. And the main purpose of the application is to increase the permitted number of units from eighty-two to one hundred and twenty-six, for a total of forty-four additional units. Here is the aerial view of the property, and as you mentioned, the property is zoned RM3. The current land use is multifamily, and the future land use map designation is moderate density residential. We'll flip through some property photos, and then we'll end with the concept plan here. In our review of the application, we did find that the proposal complies with the majority of the review criteria. We found that the proposal remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and found the proposal to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. We have a couple of items for your consideration. The first relating to building orientation. I'll draw your attention to page three, under the area-specific policy review, policy PL-five. This property is in the Plano Road focal point plan area, so there are some additional review criteria. Specifically, PL-five states that residential development fronting Plano Road should not incorporate rear facades oriented toward Plano Road, and if unable to be designed in this manner, some type of screening or landscaping requirement should be incorporated into the proposed development. Sorry, that should actually say side or rear facades. And so the applicants are proposing that the structure nearest Plano Road, if we look at the concept plan, will actually have a side-facing facade along Plano Road, and this is not consistent with the majority of the properties in this section of Plano Road. And the applicants have not provided evidence as to why the structure isn't able to be designed with the front-facing Plano Road, and so therefore, we just noted that that policy is not in compliance. They did agree, however, to a screening requirement in their development plan conditions for that side facade, and you can see the landscaping that's shown on the concept plan as well. And then the other item we wanted to touch on relates to residential amenities, and if you look at proposed open space on page three, the applicants and their development plan conditions, specifically number twelve, have identified potential residential amenities but did not guarantee which facilities the development will include. They show some facilities back here in the corner, and then looking at number twelve, they have mentioned a pool or playground or other recreational amenities, but again, there's no specifics as to exactly what that would entail. So we just wanted to point that out for your consideration. But aside from those couple of items, the staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hurd. Commissioners, any questions regarding the staff report?
So Rachel, I apologize for being dense here. I'm looking at the proposed plan, and I'm also looking at the aerial, and am I looking at this wrong? There seems to be existing structures.
Those are going to be demolished if this is approved. There are a couple of structures that would be demoed, and then they would be building back in that same area.
Okay, and so this is not a part of any of the others that we've done in this same area? This is independent, standalone, correct?
Yeah, if you look in the, I guess not recently. If you look in the development history, the last time this was before the commission would have been back in 2017. It was actually rezoned in two separate pieces, so it's a little strange when you look at the changes. There's currently two sets of development plan conditions because it was rezoned as separate portions and then combined later. So this actually helps clean all of that up as well and gets everything under one set of development plan conditions. But the last amendment for this would have been back in 2017, and the original zoning started right around 2015, when the main area was rezoned to RM3.
Okay, and so the last question is, so is this a complete rezoning, or is this an amendment to something that already exists?
This is a development plan amendment, so if we go back to the zoning map, you'll see that the property is already zoned RM3 for multifamily use. And then there are two sets of development plan conditions. Those are highlighted on page four and five and six, and so you can see that basically this would essentially combine everything under one set with some amendments to accommodate the latest proposal and increased number of units that are shown on the site plan.
Got it, and then I see where you've struck through some of those. So those go away, the ones that have the line through them, where it starts on page, what is that, page four?
Page four.
Yeah, D book, so those go away, and then the new part is what's typed there?
Yeah, so the, what would remain would then be on page five?
Got it.
Number one through, and then I guess going on to page six, seventeen.
Very good, all right, thank you, Rachel.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions for this proposal? All right, is the, thank you, Rachel. Is the applicant here or their representative, anything you'd like to add? Anything you'd like to add? All right. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, sir, if you'd come to the microphone, please. State your name and address, please, sir.
Ricardo Federico, two sixty Evergreen Court.
Evergreen Court?
Evergreen Court.
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm property number six on the adjoining property there, it'll be behind, I guess, proposed building number thirteen. We got real lucky in 2017 because they did a single-story duplex there, so I see the rooftop, and now they're going to build a two-story, they're going to tear it down, put a two-story in, so we'll have people right in our backyard. So my questions were going to be, are they going to have to move that retaining wall to honor the twenty-five-foot setback from our property line? Or, because that's a big building that's going in place of that little duplex. Forgive me, I don't know if I just throw those out there and keep going? I've only got three things, so it shouldn't be too long.
Why don't you go ahead and give us your list, and then we'll address it.
Okay, so that was the first thing, is making sure that there's a retaining wall right behind my fence on my backyard, and I'll make sure they don't have to expand into that, make sure the property lines adhere to. The second thing had to do with lighting. I noticed that they did strike through some of those binding elements, but they moved them down to the next section, right? Eleven, deed book eleven forty-one, page three ninety-eight. That number nine on lighting, they had trouble meeting that the first time because the light that's on the end of that existing building up there still lights up my kitchen and my upstairs bedroom because it's so bright, and I'd really like to make sure that whatever they put on the back of these new buildings is not going to have that effect, obviously. And then lastly, having to do with screening, the people I worked with before, the original developers, were very nice. I asked for if they could do some screening trees, and they did, but the trees didn't all take. So they're nice and tall, all the way down to the middle of my backyard, and then they all just kind of trail off. So very much appreciated, and I think the tenants would, too, not looking straight into my backyard, they'd probably appreciate having some type of screening if that could be accommodated. I know it's not depicted on this, so that's more of a request than anything else, but it would be sincerely appreciated if we could do that and have some privacy on both sides.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would the developer or their representative want to come up and address this gentleman's three requests?
Lucas Slavy, two-five-one-nine Kenbell Boulevard, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Thank you, Lucas. So he had three points, the retaining wall?
Yes, sir. I'm going off memory, but speaking with Brad, we're still maintaining the twenty-five-foot rear setback, so we should not get into that retaining wall. I can't, I can't say that with confidence, sir.
Well, I think we need to, we need to, for this gentleman's, we need to have an affirmative answer.
Okay.
And then he's got two other points, the lighting.
So Lucas, let me ask this. In the event that you would have to get into the retaining wall, you would still have an obligation to either reconstruct it or put some sort of terrain barrier back in its place, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I did speak with Brad, he, they're representing the owner and have power of attorney, but they did agree to replace all those trees that he spoke of.
Okay.
Put those back and make sure they grow, do the best they can as far as that goes.
So let's go back to the retaining wall just for a second, if we could.
Yes, sir.
The retaining wall, is it on, is it on your property? Is it on your client's property, or is it on the home?
It's on our property, so.
And so, am I accurate in stating that in the unlikely event that you have to alter the retaining wall, you would still have an obligation to either put one back or a different type of terrain accommodating structure, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and we'd have to make it happen within our twenty-five feet.
Got it, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, sir, does that answer your question? It doesn't mean that he won't change it, but it also means that if he has to put it back, he will have to put, yes, you absolutely can't.
Yeah, I want to make sure, I didn't do a very good job the first time. I'm less concerned about, you know, just losing the retaining wall because it is on their property, but as was stated in the application, there's already a natural buffer of some sorts there with mature trees, and I'm afraid if they cut that back much more, we're going to get into root systems, and then that, that existing system is not going to work as much, too. But all that foliage goes away in the autumn and the winter, and that's when the screening trees are really helpful. So that was more my concern, is that we don't cut back too far, and then you have problems maintaining.
Well, I think he's prepared to address that second one, then.
Yeah, I think so. We're going to, we're going to match finished floor of that duplex.
Lucas, would you come to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
It's all right, so it's recorded.
Yes, sir. We're going to match finished floor of the duplexes that are there. We're kind of held at that grade of the parking lot side, so we may have to cut into that grade, but like Mr. Graham said, we would have to replace that retaining wall and replace any foliage or any trees we, so we've got twenty-five feet there. If we have a vertical at the twenty-five-foot mark, we'll have to, we'll have to make sure they grow.
And this could be an enforcement issue, even if you plant them, if the planning commission becomes aware that, and Rachel, you helped me here, that they died, they all died, that obligation would still come back. Am I correct in that, Rachel?
Yes, that's correct. So if this were to move forward, we would review a new site development plan application, which would include a landscaping plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then, once the development is completed, we would do a site compliance review and make sure everything was built according to plan, and that the trees are in the right place and all that good stuff. And then later on down the road, if they die, they would still be obligated to maintain those and plant those back forever.
So it could be that that got overlooked at some point when you say some of those died out, but that obligation doesn't go away. It's still there, and if you make us aware, we'll do an enforcement there.
And on the, on the last item about the lighting?
Lighting, yeah.
Our intent is to only light the parking lot side, and I'll talk to these guys, we'll look at that light on the end wall. That doesn't seem to do any good as far as parking lot lighting, so maybe that can be either removed or redirected to the parking lot, so it doesn't shine on you. That's, that should be an easy fix.
Does that answer your questions?
It does, thank you.
All right, and then there was an agreement here, Mr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, that they would replace the retaining wall, or am I saying that right, Lucas?
Yeah.
To maintain it?
Maintain it to some, we'll have to do something because it's there for a purpose to, for the grade, but yeah, we will either maintain it, move it, rebuild it, we'll have to do something with it.
So Hamp, is that an inspection issue, or is that a DPC issue?
It's a DPC.
The staff believes that the obligation to repair the retaining wall to prevent this exists without further development.
Okay.
Okay, so that would, that would fall under construction inspection rather than a DPC. Okay, very good, thank you.
If we can make sure that the neighborhood lets us know if that damage has occurred so we can watch as it's repaired.
All right, thank you, Lucas.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is there anyone else tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? All right, thank you, sir, for being here tonight. Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, document number 2025-06-DP, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing. Second.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's planning commission final action. Our next item tonight is 2025-22ZBG Thrive Ventures LLC, care of David Doran and Greg Foster, has filed an application to rezonate eight point three-five acres located at seven seventy-eight Interstate Drive from Highway Business to Light Industrial with the general development plan.
Yes.
Amy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting in January of this year for the property that you mentioned, and it is highlighted in red. Current zoning is HB, current land use is commercial, future land use is mixed-use commercial, and we do have a couple of site photos for your reference. And then here is the proposed site plan that we'll leave up. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone from Highway Business to Light Industrial in order to expand the current development on the property to include a new online retail warehouse space in a new building. And looking at the bottom of the page, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the staff recommendation is approval pending any public hearing testimony and discussion we have. So that's all we have for our staff report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Amy.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any questions for this request? Is the applicant here or their representative, anything y'all would like to add? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, sir, if you'd come to the microphone, please.
John Tarter, mailing address five oh four US thirty-one W bypass, Bowling Green.
All right, Mr. Tarter.
I am not opposed to this zoning in any way. Uh, I am not opposed to this zoning in any way. Uh, I own lots four, five, and six of Flat Book thirty-three, page one eleven, which is what's mostly uh, got to do with uh, with what they're doing here as far as rearranging a drainage plant. I have a lot there that has not been built on, that was purchased uh, when that whole flat was made and the drainage plan made. The only reason that I'm here is I would like for the minutes to show that if I want to build on that lot, that I will not have to do any further drainage or anything on my lot in order to build because that was a buildable lot when I bought it and it is now, and it is on light industrial.
This is probably a question for staff.
I've, I've seen a couple of different layouts or proposals on this that has their, their truck interest going through the uh, the old drainage plan, which was uh, this says revision of drainage plan A. That was actually drainage uh, drainage easement B on the original flat. But I don't have a problem with that. It's just as long as I don't have to go in and lose a building lot because they're doing what they're doing. And I, like I say, I have no, no problem with it at all.
So Mr. Tarter, let me see if I understand correctly. There was a drainage plan in place for this entire development.
Correct, when that was all built.
And so your question really is, is about the modification of that drainage plan, and I bet we could get, Lucas, is this yours? I think Lucas could probably give us some answers here. I, I understand your question now.
I'm just trying to protect my future use.
Got it, got it. Makes sense. Yeah. Uh, so.
Lucas?
Yes, sir. Can you swear me in again?
No, you're fine. Well, we'll swear at you, but.
After, after. Keep it, we're on, we're on camera. So uh, we, we will have to accommodate any of that drainage off of Mr. Tarter's lots because that's part of the original drainage plan. So if we go in there and modify that basin in any way, we will have to account for your improved water a, and, and that's just, this is the way it is. So.
Come up, Mr. Tarter, please go up to the microphone.
We're, we're recording him, Mr. Tarter, so we need it for the record.
The only, the only thing that, that had concerned me is that the fire department or someone had requested a fire lane all the way around this property, and that makes a street, I'm supposing that it would be blacktop, between me and a drainage plan, and that was the red flag for me.
Sure. Heck, got that deep into it, but we, we may either uh, pipe under it or plan to sheet flow that across that drive lane he's talking about. But one way or another, we will make sure that his storm water can get to the basin.
Yeah, I understand his concerns. So you're not going to prevent his stormwater runoff from still getting to the basement, basin? That's all, that's all still gonna happen?
That's right. Yeah. And, and I'm not sure exactly how we'll accomplish that just yet, but we will make sure that your water can get where it needs to go.
It's a gentle slope, one foot per probably fifty feet now, so it's just. Flat, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Tarter. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, is there anyone else tonight in the audience that has a, a question or opposition to this request? All right. Hearing none. Uh, we call for a motion, please, and uh, this is the uh, County, City, and Ms. Ballinger for Plum Springs.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-five twenty-two ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ballinger?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved. Planning commission final action uh, in twenty-one days unless a request is made to a legislative body to hear the item. Thank you all for being here. Our next item is twenty twenty-five twenty-three Z County Placid Properties LLC, care of Darren Johnson, has that, has filed an application to rezone two eight, two plus acres located zero Glasgow Road, approximately eleven hundred feet southwest of Fred Basin Road from Ag to OP, OPR Office and Professional Residential with the general development plan. Amy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on June of last year for the property that you mentioned and then is highlighted in red. Current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is single-family residential, and the future land use is mixed use commercial. Here are a couple of photos of the property and surrounding area. And then here is the uh, site plan that has been supplied to us. Again, the applicant is proposing to rezone from agriculture to office and professional residential in order to repurpose the former residence for an office use. And then looking at the bottom of the page, um, the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the staff recommendation is approval pending any public hearing um, testimony and any discussion we might have. That's all we have for our staff report.
All right. Thank you, Amy. Is the applicant here? Oh, excuse me. Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right. Is the applicant or their representative here anything you'd like to add?
Will Kilgore, ten ten College Street.
Mr. Kilgore, swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Will.
Uh, I don't really have anything to add. I just, if the commission has any questions, happy to answer any.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, sir. If you'd come to the microphone, please. Yes, sir. If you'd state your name and address, please, sir.
Matthew Calcheski, twenty-three thirty Glasgow Road.
Yes, sir. You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you, sir. Matthew?
Uh, so I spoke with Mr. Thomas earlier this week when I saw the notice uh, about the zoning change, and I called him and I asked him that he would change it into a home office. I live directly across the street. Wanted to make sure, again, I'm not opposed to this at all. I just want to make sure that it's not going to turn into a gas station. And I spoke with Mr. Thomas, everything like that, and he assured me that it would be a home office. I just want verification and peace of mind is why I'm here.
Sure. Yes, sir. And I think, Mr. Kilgore, would you come up and maybe for Matthew, can't pronounce your last name, apologize? All right. If you would, if you would come up and state just.
Also, this might be something for staff to address.
Well, maybe, maybe they could.
Sorry, I was just gonna say the zoning that they're requesting would not permit the use um, of a gas station. Just based on the zoning of, that's before you this evening.
Yeah. Is that fair enough? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being here. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight has opposition or question for this request? All right. Hearing none. We call for a motion, commissioners.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-five twenty-three Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in this staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Mr. Drain?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved and it's planning commission final action in twenty-one days unless a request is made for a legislative body to hear the item. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-five, uh, excuse me, twenty twenty-five twenty-four ZBG. Johnson Investment Properties LLC, care of Stephen Johnson, has filed an application for his own thirteen point plus acres located at six seventy-five Hennessy Way from highway, from highway heavy industrial to light industrial with the general development plan.
Ms. Hurd?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in February for the property at six seventy-five Hennessy Way. This is the current aerial view for the property. As you mentioned, the current zoning is heavy industrial. Current land use is industrial and vacant, and the future land use map is mixed use commercial. Got some property photos that we'll flip through. And then we'll leave it up uh, with the site plan for your reference. Um, the applicant is requesting to actually downzone the property from heavy industrial to light industrial in order to allow for more flexibility and uses on the property. Potential uses include office space, storage, sports training, eating establishments, and other retail sales and service uses. In our review of the application, we found that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and found that the proposal is generally compatible with the surrounding area. There are a couple of items for your consideration. Um, the first relating to outdoor product display. So if you flip to surrounding land uses on page two, we've noted that existing uses in the area include properties with primary structures and associated parking. Little outdoor product display exists in the vicinity, and the proposed light industrial zone permits outdoor product display in unlimited quantities. So just to give you an example of what that might include, um, a, a very common use would be like prefabricated storage buildings. The ordinance in this zoning classification would allow that in unlimited quantities. Um, but we've just pointed out that many of the uh, properties in the area are zoned highway business, and in those situations, outdoor product display would be limited to a maximum of five percent of the total site area. So we just suggested that the applicant consider maybe restricting it to some, something similar that would be complementary to those existing properties in the area. And then the second item for your consideration is on page three relating to signage. The proposed light industrial zone allows freestanding signage up to thirty feet in height with a maximum sign face area of one hundred square feet. Existing signs in the area are shorter in height and smaller in sign face area than what is permitted by the zoning ordinance. And you also may remember a recent zone change, fairly recent in twenty twenty-three, um, just to the west of this property, and the development plan conditions for that require that freestanding signage be a maximum of twenty feet in height with a maximum sign face area of seventy-five square feet. So we suggested that the applicant consider imposing a similar restriction on signage for this property, um, but that was not addressed. So those are just a few items for your consideration. Uh, but aside from that, our, our recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and any discussion.
So Rachel, go back to the uh, outdoor display. The maximum for everybody else around there is five percent? Is that what you said?
So if we go back to the zoning map, um, so in heavy industrial, the current heavy industrial zoning, you couldn't have that type of use. So you can see the dark gray shaded properties um, in the immediate vicinity. They wouldn't have that opportunity now. The highway business properties, which are the purple properties, if they were to have any type of outdoor product display, they could have up to five percent of the site in that display area. The light industrial zone allows outdoor product display in unlimited quantities. So for that reason, we suggested that they may want to consider limiting that.
And that would be addressed in a DPC? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, very good.
And that would be in agreement by the developers to limit product, outdoor product display to five percent of the total area of the property.
Yes. That would, that would match the requirements for the HB zoned properties that are located there um, in that same vicinity.
Then also on page three, the applicant did not address the height, the signage height. That what we approved was twenty feet in that area.
That, that was our suggestion based on a fairly recent zone change, um, just to the west here, and that those, I guess that suggestion was based off of the restrictions for that same property that was before you a couple of years ago.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, one, before you sit down, are there any other questions for staff regarding this? All right. Is the applicant here or their representative anything you'd like to add? No, nothing you'd like to add? Okay. Thank you. Well, I tell you what, why don't you come up here and uh, Mr. Johnson, and uh, let's uh, swear you in, your name and address, please, sir?
Stephen Johnson, two thirty Vaskerville Road.
What, what, whatever?
Home address or the business?
Whatever you want.
Two thirty Vaskerville Road.
Okay. You swear to tell the truth, Mr. Johnson? Yes, sir. So you heard about the uh, the outdoor display and the unlimited, and I think the staff's recommendation. What would you agree to as far as outdoor display?
Well, it's potential.
Who would you talk into, Mike? Because it's being recorded.
Yeah, the potential tenants, I, I'm not sure what they would require, uh, or, and so it's really unknown what they would need at this point. So I, I don't know what I could actually commit to there.
So at this point, this is a downzoning.
Right.
The reason she's highlighted this is currently you don't have any ability to do outdoor display. And so now it, for us, it becomes a compatibility issue. If we open the door to unlimited display, then we could have, we could have some type of business that doesn't quite fit. Five percent of the total property is still pretty generous. There's, there's, it seems to me that, I don't know what, what's the total footprint of this property? So, well, somebody do some quick math here. Uh, five percent of that is.
Almost a quarter, three quarters of an acre.
Yeah. You could have three quarters of an acre in display at that point, unless you're, you're gonna, I don't know, display um, uh, acres of, of outbuildings or something like that. It, it seems that uh, this is a, a, a pretty, uh, not a very risky agreement uh, on your, on your behalf. We're not gonna, we may not be able to just leave it wide open, given the compatibility issue that we may encounter here.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that it was the whole property. I thought maybe just the parking lot or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. It's five percent of the entire property. So it's, it's still very, very generous.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I wouldn't think anything over half of that front parking lot or half of the back parking lot. So I'll be looking at maybe, uh, I don't know how to do the math there, but.
Well, but if you look at the, go back, if we go back to, well, of the, you've got a lot of parking, you've got a big building there. Basically, your building would not accommodate outdoor, and uh, I think what Mr. Graham was saying that uh, you know, basically if you wanted to put some outdoor displays, you, you, you're gonna be limited to your parking lot. And it's, let's just say the parking lot is um, one-third of your total property with some water retention in your building. Uh, you, you would be limited to a smaller amount of outdoor displays.
I'm not sure you could get an entire three quarter. Uh, uh, I don't, I'm not sure you could get five percent display if the time you build your building and put your parking lot in.
The building's already there.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, maybe.
A potential tenant that's coming in has a lot of display that they would sell, equipment, that sort of thing. So that might, I don't know if the five percent would be enough because they're talking about fifty to sixty thousand square feet of display in the parking lot.
Okay. So Rachel, can you address that?
Well, you said your potential tenant would have equipment storage or they're selling, they have equipment for sale?
We want to leave it open for both. We do, we are talking about a potential tenant that would be selling that right now. Uh, but we do want to leave it open in the future, maybe in the back or something. They want it to store it as well inside.
So does that's fit within the zoning that we're talking about here?
Well, there's different categories, and I need to look it up in the ordinance, but if it's like um, display of.
Let's, let's say.
Like construction equipment, like lifts and, or farm, farm machinery or something like that. That's not included in the same category as what we would call outdoor product display.
Right.
That's considered.
So they could have that independent of, of this?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, so is that helpful? Uh, so you could have a display, let's say it's a, a company that sells um, construction equipment, and they've got multiple skid steer loaders and excavators and et cetera. That still doesn't count toward this display.
I get it.
Uh, the display is gonna be uh, something other than that, like uh, The display is going to be something other than that, like some sort of, I don't know if mobile homes would count, but...
No, that's a different use. I guess the easiest example to give is just like your prefabricated storage buildings or like lawn furniture, gazebos, like playground equipment, that sort of thing. That's the more common type of outdoor product display that we see throughout the community.
Okay, so they do both. So the 5% would cover how many square feet then, or?
Well, I think we would go by acreage.
Or acreage?
Yeah, then if you've got 13 acres, 5%, be approximately three quarters of an acre, approximately.
And any kind of equipment be exempt. So I think that would be okay if we could do 10. I think that would more than cover it, if we could do 10%.
So that would be like an acre and a half? Yeah, okay. Gosh, I'd probably be okay with that.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Johnson, would you agree to a new detailed development plan condition number eight, which limits outdoor product display to 10% of the entire surface area of the development?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson, one other thing, the freestanding signage, would you agree to be compatible with the other buildings in your neighborhood instead of 30 feet, 20 feet in height?
75 square feet maximum.
The only issue with that was that we're at a lower elevation than the adjoining properties, and we're already blocked out by...
Trees.
Trees and a billboard.
Yeah.
So does it, is it measured from the lowest elevation where the sign is standing?
Yeah, from the ground, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I think he's got a point there. What is, the maximum is 30? I think I would be more, I would lean toward allowing the 30, given his elevation constraint there, to be able to make it visible. So if I understand you correctly, your elevation, the topography is lower, and in order for you to get a sign at the same height as someone else who has a 20-foot one, you would have to be 30-foot. Am I stating that?
We'd still be lower.
You'd still be lower, I see.
But everybody's jumping off that ramp, getting on, and they're zooming past it anyway. You might even want 90 feet.
It'd be nice.
He's limited at 30.
I know, but I mean, it's a beautiful facility, but everybody's zooming right past it. So I agree with Mr. Graham, at 30 feet.
So no DPC change there would be required, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, all right.
Mr. Johnson, anything else you would like to add?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. Commissioners, wait a minute, we've had commissioners, excuse me. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has opposition or question to this request? All right, hearing none, commissioners, and he agreed to the...
The new DPC number eight?
Yes, okay. All right, commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 2025-24ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Green?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ballinger?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's final action in 21 days unless requests made by the legislative body to hear the item. Our next item tonight is 2025-25ZBG. Portals Rentals LLC, care of Osmani Portals, has filed an application for a zone 0.623 acres located at Zero and 126 Adam Street from general business and RM4 multifamily residential to central business with the general development plan. Ms. Hurd?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in March for the properties on Adam Street. The current aerial view is shown on the screen, and you can see that the current zoning, as you mentioned, is RM4 and general business. The current land use is single-family residential and vacant, and the future land use designation is mixed-use residential. Got a few property photos. And then we'll leave the site plan up. There's also a rendering that was supplied this afternoon by the applicant. He may want to speak more to that in a minute, but we did receive that this afternoon, so that's not in your packets, but we do have it for reference. So the request is to rezone the property to central business in order to develop a mixed-use multi-story building. And in our review of the application, we found that the proposal complies with the majority of the review criteria that we assessed in the review process, and we found the proposal will be generally compatible with the surrounding area. We have a few items for your consideration. I will say that the first item listed at the bottom of page one relating to alley access has since been addressed. That's all squared away now since the packets were mailed to you all. So with that, I'll just skip over to demolition of the existing historic structure. So if you look on page two, under cultural and historical features, we've noted that the property is located in the Adams Kentucky National Historic District, though the property is not protected locally. The existing home was constructed in 1901 and is proposed to be demolished to accommodate the proposed development. The applicant agreed to donate salvageable materials to a nonprofit organization prior to demolition, and staff also suggested that the applicant consider offering the structure to the local fire department for training purposes, but this was not addressed. And then, next on page three, just draw your attention to the surrounding land uses section. Development plan condition five proposes hours of operation from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., excluding any residential or overnight accommodations use. And given the proximity of the existing and planned residential uses, staff suggested that the applicants consider further restricting the hours, perhaps something ranging from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., Friday through Saturday. This was not addressed. And then last, on page three, under building materials, buildings in the area we've noted have exteriors comprised mainly of brick, stone, vinyl, and metal, and building foundations are mainly brick or stone. The applicants have included generally complementary building materials in development plan condition four. However, staff did request that the applicants clarify what would constitute modern masonry material, and specifically if it is the intent that this would include plain and/or split-face block. And that was not addressed either. But just a few items for your consideration. Other than those few things, our recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, we heard about the hours of operation and modern masonry materials and what that involves. Are there any questions for staff?
So Rachel, help me, why do, what is the change here? Why are they having to request it if they already? Am I misunderstanding something?
So right now, if we go back to the zoning map, there's a split in zoning. Half of the property is zoned multifamily and half is zoned general business. And the property owner would like to develop a mixed-use building. So the first floor would contain commercial uses. It could contain a mix of commercial and residential. Up to 50% of the first floor could be residential, but the front half along Adam Street, at least 50% of that would have to be commercial. And then the upper stories could include unlimited residential uses or commercial uses as well. But the current zoning designations just wouldn't allow that mix of uses.
Okay, very good. And the other questions would be for the applicant on the DPCs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Graham. Is the applicant here or their representative anything you'd like to add? Yes, sir, if you've come. Yes, sir, if you'd state your name and address, please.
My name is Osmani Portales. I live on 312 Gayo Avenue.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Portales, could we go ahead and go to the DPCs and clarify the meaning of modern masonry materials? I assume from your application, you have no intent to build this structure with an exposed CMU block or split-face block or any of those.
No.
So hold just for a second, let me go ahead and address, ask the question of staff. Is that just a DPC where we say no CMU block, exposed CMU block is allowed, or how do we address that?
Well, I guess it's up to you all. It was more of just, we were hoping for some clarification of what that was intended to include.
Why don't we go ahead and clarify, just in the outside chance that Mr. Portales, is that correct? For some reason, he decides to go in a different direction, we've got it covered. So what, could we just add a DPC that prohibits exposed CMU block, whether it be smooth or split-face?
Are you planning to use any type of block, exposed block?
No, use brick, hardy board, that's it.
Okay.
So what'd you say? You say hardy board?
Brick or hardy board.
Hardy plank, yeah.
Okay.
As long as Mr. Portales is comfortable agreeing to that.
So Mr. Portales, given that you have no intention for exposed CMU block, are you comfortable adding a restriction that says you can't have any exposed CMU block?
Yes.
All right, very good. And then...
The hours of operation.
So what hours of operation do you anticipate you need there?
Normally, we're planning to have, we own next door where was a habitat building or a demon market. We have office space there. We have more normally between, they come in 8:00 a.m. to 6:00, 7:00, or I would like to have 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., just in case if we have any restaurant or any other type of business.
So the first part of that then would be, instead of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., he's proposing 5:00 a.m. to midnight?
It is.
Am I understanding that correctly? Mr. Portales, did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And...
So the staff recommended potential operating hours from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Oh, no, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, 6:00 p.m., 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and then 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday. So if you accommodate a restaurant...
12:00 a.m., sorry.
12:00 a.m., 12:00 p.m.
Midnight.
Yeah.
Everybody's in bed, these people are all in bed at midnight. So...
So you agree to those hours of operation? All right, very good.
No, you don't have.
Sorry.
And I think that was all, correct?
Yeah, so you agree to those hours, correct?
Yes.
All right. Did we miss anything?
We didn't, but Hamp noticed one thing while we were sitting here, and your development plan conditions on the materials, it's your intent that that applied to the entire building, correct? Your material requirements would be for the entire building?
Yes.
And not just the facade that faces Adam Street, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So we can change facade to exterior?
Yeah.
Okay. So you've heard the three conditions you've agreed to?
Yes.
And you agree to those?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question or opposition to this request? Thank you, sir, for being here tonight. Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 2025-25ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Green?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's final, planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request made by the legislative body to hear the item. Our last item tonight is 2025-26Z County SVJG Development LLC, care of John Groves, has filed an application for a zone 0.44, approximately a half acre located at 5617 Louisville Road from RM4 multifamily residential to highway business with the general development plan. And so we have five, let's see, one, two, three, four.
We have three in the five, isn't it?
So that's enough?
Yes.
Okay, well, and also, she calls for plum springs. Okay, all right, just making sure. Amy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting in April for the property that you mentioned. Here's an aerial view for reference. Current zoning is RM4. Current land use is agriculture. And the future land use is mixed-use commercial. And here are some photos, the property. And then here is the site plan. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone 0.44 acres on a portion of the property at 5617 Louisville Road from multifamily residential RM4 to highway business. And this might look familiar to you guys. The planning commission approved a zone change for this same property in 2022, and the applicants are now requesting to shift the HB zoning line back 25 feet from what was originally approved. So basically, this is just to move some zoning lines. At the bottom of the page, the applicants have proposed identical development plan conditions to those approved with the original rezoning of the property in 2022. And the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, the staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing testimony and any discussion. That's all we have for staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Amy. Commissioners, any questions for this proposal?
So Amy, this looks pretty straightforward, but make sure I understand, there's a commercial portion and a, what's the back half?
Correct, let's go back to the zoning here. So the back part is the RM4, and then the front part is the AC portion. So they're just shifting those lines to back 25 feet.
Whatever they're building, you need some additional space back there. Okay, very good, very good. No other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Applicant, anything you all would like to add?
I don't think so, Chair Warren. We're here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. David Porter. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has opposition or question to this request? All right, hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number 2025-26Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Ballinger?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Green?
Yes, sir.
The motion is approved, and it's planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made by the legislative body to hear the item. Mr. Peterson, do we have any old business?
No, sir.
Any discussion items from staff? All right, thank you. Well, we will see everybody in June. June what? June 5th, full agenda? Okay, that's good. All right, thank you all for all being here tonight. All right, thank you all for all being here tonight.